Going to order the Ballpark City Council Regular Meeting. Is there anybody here who is looking to lead, oh Pastor Jackson, would you like to lead us in invocation? Thank you Pastor Jackson. Chief, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for that. City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila will be joining us later.
Okay. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Chair.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
And Councilmember Hernandez would be excused today, so I'll make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Hernandez, can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? Not. City Clerk, continue please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Manuel Estrada.
Here, thank you for that. City Attorney, is there anything to report out?
Thank you Mayor, we did review multiple things in closed session, but we took no final action on any closed session agenda item, so there's no reportable action, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you for that. And so at this moment, I am going to ask Veronica Lopez, Representative from Assemblywoman's office, to come up here and join me as we start our presentations and commendations for some of our residents. So first, we want to celebrate and acknowledge Kiara Aparicio, who is here with us, I saw her come in. And if you want to come join us up here. And so as Kiara makes her way up, Kiara was a Sierra Vista High School student, she's in 12th grade, she came to the US from El Salvador at the age of four. And she recently won the 2022 National Association for Bilingual Education, she was the first place winner in the high school category. And she was, and so I want to emphasize that she was a national winner, meaning that she won, and she was first place out of all the contestants in the United States. She won a trip to New York, she had the honor to represent it for more than 1,000 people, and she won $500. Her essay topic was "How Will Being Bilingual Assist You In Your Future Endeavors?", and she wrote about wanting to become a bilingual doctor right here in Balden Park. The city that welcomed and accepted her into the community, and she wants to give back to the residents of Balden Park what they so kindly have given to her. Okay, and so Kiara is going to go ahead and read her essay for us.
To get to where I am right now has not been easy at all. It has been a curse of many obstacles. I have been discriminated against my pronunciation, my way of reading, my way of spelling, my way of speaking, and for just being myself. People have told me, "Go away, you do not belong here, go back to your country." But I always held my head up, and I withdraw in silence and courage. This is because only I know where I've gone to this country. Only I know the heartbreaking obstacles that my mother and I have experienced. Only I know that sacrifice I had to make to get to this country. Only I know how sad it is to leave my grandparents alone in El Salvador, my birth country, that I'm not sure I will see again. That is why, after three years, I have been able to become a proud and humble bilingual person. Becoming bilingual has been a privilege and a source of pride for me and my family. Being bilingual has made me a very strong person in the field of cultural knowledge. Being bilingual has made me a more creative person, and has given me the tools to help other people who've gone to this country without knowing a word of English. It has given me a reason why I have to continue fighting in this country. It has made me realize that I have to keep fighting for my dream, I want to become a doctor. I want to be a doctor, where for me, the color skin or the language that people speak will not be a barrier that will decide who I treat. It will matter that I will be able to assist my patients with love, dignity, and honor. And I will help them to find ways to become well and strong, both physically and mentally. Since nobody is born hating others because of colored skin, origin, or religion. Then people must have learned to hate. If this is true, then they can also be taught to love and respect everyone equally. As a doctor to all people, I can serve as a role model to others. My door will be open to all people. There will not be a limit or a barrier that will decide who I treat. And as I said before, my doors will be open to all people, there will not be like putting away just because of the race. And in this world, in this country, we are only humans. We are all come from the same race, the human race. Being bilingual will help in the future. To be all my patients equal services. It will help me to communicate with them and understand their needs and concerns in their languages. It will help me create that world in which there will be equity for all. Thank you.
If Kiara's family can join us up here for a quick family photo, and on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of the City Council, we do want to present this certificate of recognition to Kiara Aparicio. And the City Council of the City of Ballpark congratulates you for being the first place winner of the 2022 National Association for Bilingual Education Award. We wish you continued success on your academic endeavors, and thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to your school and our community.
Good evening everyone, Veronica Lopez with the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, and I am here to also congratulate Kiara Aparicio on her wonderful essay after hearing her read it. It is something that we, last month was, last month was Women's Month, and we're continuing to fight for equity, so I am so in equality, so I'm so proud to hear her essay. Saying that that's what she is going to do when she becomes a doctor. Thank you so much. Kiara? On behalf of the California State Assembly and the residents of the 48th Assembly District, Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio congratulates you and commends you on your first place win at the National Association for Bilingual Education. Congratulations. Felicidades.
Thank you. And next, I do, I want to welcome up Stephanie Wang, and she was, she's also from Sierra Vista High School. Is she here today? There she is. She's from Sierra Vista High School, she's in 12th grade. Stephanie Wang was born in the United States, she moved back to China and came back to Balden Park, the place she calls home. She won the 2022 California Association for Bilingual Education, she was the first place winner in the high school category, and she won $1,000. Her essay topic was "How Does Being Bilingual Influence Your Perception Of Other Cultures And Languages And Promotes Unity In Your School And Or Community?" She wrote about her confusion as to her identity, "Am I Chinese Or Am I American?", she concluded with a powerful statement about who she has, who she has discovered she is, the benefits of being bilingual, and her goal to unite our community with the help of her bilingualism.
Um, thank you for Gabe. For awarding me. And um, thanks to, thanks my teacher and my mom and dad. And my aunt and my teacher, Ms. Freed, and thank you.
Stephanie, on behalf of the City Council and the City of Ballpark, we congratulate you for being the first place winner of the 2022 California Association for Bilingual Education Award. We wish you continued success on your academic endeavors, and thank you for being, for bringing favorable recognition to your school and your community.
So on behalf of, one more. On behalf of Assemblywoman Rubio, Stephanie, congratulations on your first place win with Gabe, which is the California Association for Bilingual Education. Thank you for continued focusing on your education. Congratulations. Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
When I see her with you.
If Stephanie's family can join us. Oh, our classmates. And then I do want to acknowledge, I believe Ms. Freed is with us via Zoom. And while she unmutes herself, I do want to welcome the Sierra Vista High School 2021-2022 Varsity Girls Mount View Basketball League Champions. And the Sierra Vista High School Varsity Girls Basketball Team, their head coach is Sandy Ledezma Duckring. And I am, I am old enough to know Ms. Coach Duckring as Ms. Ledezma. Assistant Coach Jenna Guerrero, and they are the 2022 Undefeated League Champions for Mount View League in Girls Basketball, they're back-to-back champs because they also won the Mount View League Champs for the 2021 season, even during the wild COVID season. So congratulations to the girls and their coaches. But just a fun fact, Coach Duckring was my forensic biology teacher. A couple of years ago, not too long ago. And then, so real quick, I do want to acknowledge, we have Julie Nguyen, Ashley Garcia, Alyssa Tayada, Alyssa Altamarino, Altamirano, Emily Hernandez, Destiny Sanchez. All right, we know who the favorite is, huh? Victoria Gonzalez, Fatima Lopez, Christine Lozano, Joseline Navarro, Fiona Tran. Second favorite, Carla Alvarado, Elizabeth Reyes, Maria Orozco, Maya Eugenio, and Rebecca Rosales Montoya. So congratulations to you all.
Hello. Well, congratulations ladies. Great, great job. A fun fact, my cousin, Coach Sanchez, for the boys. Yeah, so he's my cousin. So rivalry right here. So on behalf of California State Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, we'd like to commend the Varsity Girls Basketball Team on their 2022 Mount View League Girls Basketball Championship. Congratulations ladies.
I don't have, I was gonna bring more. Oh yes, thank you. You can make your way this way. So big congratulations to the Sierra Vista Basketball Team.
I just want to say that I'm the girls manager for this team, and I'm very proud of the girls that worked very hard for two years.
I'd also like to say, I'd like to thank the mayor and the City of Balden Park for recognizing us, it is very special to us. And we appreciate all the support, and we look forward to more support from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now I'd like to bring up Jolene, who is our One Legacy Ambassador, and we are going to present to her the Donate for Life proclamation. Always good when you bring a team. So, Jolene and the It is Sierra Vista night, so we have a Sierra Vista alumni over here, who's Lauren. So, so today is April, it's April 2022, whereas organ tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts, recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than 121,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortages of donated organs. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Billions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors, over 10 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored. California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, I, Emmanuel J Estrada, Mayor of the City of Balden Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, Councilmembers Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Donate Life Month. DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Ballpark, California, and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or www.donvidaCalifornia.org.
On behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio in the California State Legislature, we would like to present the certificate of this proclamation, proclaiming April 2022 as Donate Life California Month in this District 48. Assemblywoman Rubio would like to thank you for your unwavering dedication and commitment to your efforts to inspire Californians to save lives by encouraging them to register to be organ eye and tissue donors through the DMV's PINTA program and the Donate Life Registry. We commend you on your contributions and recognize again April 2022 as Donate Life Month in this State Assembly 48. Congratulations.
Right now, I want to let Mona share her story about her, because I can't talk now, about her connection to organ donation.
My name is Mona Castro, I am a longtime ambassador with One Legacy, and I have a picture here today just to show my connection to donation. And the young lady in this picture is my daughter. She was born with severe congenital heart disease and not expected to live. But because her family said yes to donation so many years ago, she received that very special gift. And at five weeks old, she became the 85th baby at Loma Linda to receive a heart transplant under six months of age. This January, she just celebrated 32 years as a heart recipient. That is a huge milestone. But over the last several years, she had been heading into renal failure. She wasn't on a transplant list, and she wasn't on dialysis. But the little guy in this picture here, I know it might be kind of hard for some of you to see, but the little boy in this picture is my nephew. Tragedy struck our family three years ago, and my nephew Lucas passed away on his fourth birthday. He was able to save the lives of three people, both of his kidneys and his liver. And full circle, he saved his big cousin's life. My daughter now has her baby cousin's kidney. And it's been three years, we're still a grieving family, but we're so grateful that my brother said yes to donation. So I would encourage all of you to speak to your loved ones, let them know your wishes. You never know when it might be your own family member that you're saving. Thank you.
And then as we get ready to take a picture, I do want to acknowledge Jolene, who was Assemblywoman, one of Assemblywomen's Women of the Year for our district. So thank you for that. And next, I do want to welcome up our Recreation and Community Services Commission. And we can welcome up our Keep Balden Park Beautiful participants that are here today. We have Commissioner Rodriguez up here, and then we have some of our volunteers coming up.
There's a lot of Sierra Vista in the house, but I'm gonna say they save the best for last.
BP. All right, we don't need to, we don't need anybody fighting in here, right? It's a small place, please. So, so I do want to present, we have Arbor Day, and Arbor Day is for our Community Services Commission, and so for our Commissioner Rodriguez. In 1872, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the plant of trees. And the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Emmanuel J Estrada, Mayor of the City of Balden Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, Councilmembers Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Balden Park. And urge all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, all citizens urge to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Just a quick plug, don't forget to join us on April 16th, where we'll be having our Spring Fest. With that, we'll be doing an environmental health fair and a tree planting ceremony for three members of the community that have passed away.
And of course, to our volunteers, we're proclaiming April 22nd, 2022 we're proclaiming April 22, 2022, to be Earth Day. Earth Day is observed annually to promote awareness of Earth's life-sustaining ecosystem and the importance of preserving its integrity through education and wise stewardships and life on our planet. The quest for meaning and purpose in life can be threatened by mankind's failure to take charge and care of the Earth. And whereas the protection and nurturance of the Earth in every block of every neighborhood can be achieved through mankind's united efforts, and whereas to aid these purposes, there is a need for worldwide decisions and a personal commitment by individuals to be responsible trustees of the Earth in our own area of ability and influence. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, council members Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, and Paul C Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2022, as Earth Day in the City of Baldwin Park, and encourage all citizens to engage in environmentally responsible lifestyles in an effort to sustain the natural world around us.
We're still kind of shocked that we're here, but we are excited that somebody is paying attention to the things that we're doing. Earth Day was signed into law in 1970 by Nixon, of all people. I think I would just like to remind you guys that every day is Earth Day. Every day.
What if people want to volunteer?
I mean, you can volunteer anywhere in your city. I know Keep Baldwin Park Beautiful, the parks are going to start doing that again. But for us, the club that we do, we do all of the recycling at Baldwin Park High School. So, other than that, I don't know where you could, I mean, otherwise you're just reaching out to your individual communities. And side note, Gavin Newsom is very close to signing in recycling, going from five cents a bottle to 10 cents. So, money and good for the environment.
I just want to congratulate these, our commission for Arbor Day and Earth Day. Thank you. On behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, obviously, thank you for helping keep the community clean, environmentally healthy. So, thank you, both organizations.
Thank you. And then again, congratulations to everybody for all your efforts and everything you're doing. You are not only achieving things for yourself, you are achieving things for our city and each organization that you represent, and we appreciate that. At this moment, we will move to open public communications. Chief Deputy City Clerk, or City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have Arturo Luna. Arturo Luna.
Hello, gentlemen. Where's the rest of the city council? They don't come anymore? Well, I think those people that aren't here should dissolve the city council and start all over again. If you can't be here, you shouldn't be even... You know, we voted for these people, and they say, "We don't have to go no more. We'll just stay home and do all our talking on the phone." Well, you two people showed up because you have to, more likely. But the rest of them, they're useless. Us residents of Baldwin Park want to see your guys' face, the ladies and the gentlemen that aren't here. Are you people so darn tired that you can't show up? Maybe the mayor should say, send them a letter and say, "Hey, if you can't show up, let's have an election in November and hire somebody that wants to be here." You two, these other people made it. Those people are part-time employees, and they can't show up. What the hell's wrong with these people? The next thing on my agenda is, number one, we didn't get an agenda. Got a piece of paper with a bunch of stuff on it, and that was it. Second thing is, you want to raise our taxes. We have a water drought coming up. Should have been voted on a year ago, over a year ago. The gentleman stood down here, and I even said behind him, "Start now." What'd he do? Just looked at me like I was out in fairyland or something. These people go to school, go to college, and they still can't understand we have a water shortage. You look at the reservoirs, they're down about 50 feet, 100 feet, or whatever it is. And they don't tell nobody, "We should do it now." That's like these people that aren't here. They should be here. We didn't vote for them to stay home. We voted for them to be here. You, as a mayor, should tell them, "If you can't show up, turn in your resignation so we can get somebody that's willing to be here." We didn't vote for them to stay home. You might say, "They can stay home." You're wrong. No lawyer, no people to represent anybody here. These people that show up, we don't want to look at empty chairs. Maybe you ought to just throw them in the trash. These people were voted on to be here at this meeting.
Your time is up, Mr. Luna.
If they can't show up, fire them.
Your time is up.
Maybe that's why this country's falling apart.
Your time is up, Mr. Luna.
We got people that are not willing to show up that were voted in. Maybe the CEO has more knowledge of why they're not here. You need to have these people show up. I didn't vote for them to stay home. I voted for them to be here. This is understood through everybody that votes. And as far as our taxes go, don't raise them. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Sines.
Honorable Mayor, City Council staff, residents of the City of Baldwin Park, community members. First off, just wanted to come in and introduce myself. I'm Chris Sines, resident of the City of Baldwin Park. Also have the pleasure of serving as Vice President of the Baldwin Park Kiwanis Club. And here to bring some information from our club. So, actually, Kiwanis Club, it's an organization committed to helping the community and helping kids. We've actually done a few, so kind of echoing the humanitarian club. If anybody wants to help clean up the community, we've organized several community cleanups, cleaning up shopping centers in our city, cleaning up the Emerald Necklace. Anybody's welcome. For more information, you can visit us or follow us on our social media pages, facebook.com/bpkewanis. But here today, I'm actually here to give the city council and the city and our community information about our upcoming golf tournament. We have our Tease Up for Kids charity golf tournament coming up on June 6 at 7:00 a.m. at California Country Club in Whittier, California. This is a charity tournament that will benefit both the Kiwanis Clubs of Baldwin Park and La Puente. Here to ask the community, just kind of pass out information about sponsorship and participation, and thank our sponsors publicly. We've received generous, we just kicked off registration and sponsorship, and we've received generous sponsorship from Cisco Technologies, Care Solus, and the Office of Assemblymember Blanca Rubio. So, thank you. I've asked Marlene to pass out information, hard copies, to the city council and the mayor, also requesting permission to publish our information on the city's website. The city is a charter member of the Baldwin Park Kiwanis Club. So, we'd greatly appreciate more help in marketing our events. I guess for the community, for more information on this particular event, our social media page, facebook.com/teaseupforkids. More information, you can contact me at cisainz@icloud.com. Thank you so much.
Here, we have Catherine Lozier, our local librarian, who would also like to speak, and we will call her now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, community partners, and fellow committee members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. Thank you also for the lovely post on the Baldwin Park City's social media yesterday for National Library Workers' Day. It's a pleasure to work in this community, and we thank you so much for the recognition. April's also National Library Month, and to celebrate, we've launched our Spring Reading Sprint. In the month of April, we're challenging all readers to read 400 minutes to cross our finish line. Participants can sign up and track their time online and earn digital bookmarks for every 100 minutes they've read. Children and teens will receive a free book. And adults get entered weekly into drawings and for a chance to win a grand prize of a Kindle Fire. To participate, please visit our website at lacountylibrary.org or stop by the library, and we can help. And then, we also are celebrating Dia. It's El Dia de los Niños, El Dia de los Libros, their children's day, book day, and it's also commonly known as Dia. And it's a nationally-recognized initiative that emphasizes the importance of literacy for children from all backgrounds. And it's a daily commitment to linking children and their families to diverse books, languages, and cultures. This year, at the LA County Library, we're trying our Dia celebration in which families food traditions. Throughout the month of April and into May, we'll be celebrating with virtual and in-person programs here at Baldwin Park Library on Wednesday, April 20, at 3:30. We will be celebrating with stories about food traditions, and we'll be making craft-honoring favorite recipes. And for adults that are looking for a hobby that can be done anywhere and anytime, we have a special virtual program taking place on Wednesday, April 13, at 5:00 p.m. presented by the LA Audubon Society called Birds 101, in interest to birds and birdwatching in the LA County area. LA County has the most bird species of any county in the Midwest, with over 500 species. And in this program, they'll cover how to get started with birdwatching without breaking the bank, where to go to see birds around LA, and plus, they'll tell us a little bit about common species that we might find here. For any information on, for more information on our programs or services, please visit us on the web again at lacountylibrary.org. Come visit us in person at the library, or feel free to call us at 626-962-6947. Thank you so much for all that you do, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Those were all the written and call-in requests.
Great. If there's anybody looking to speak that didn't fill out a card, now's your time.
John Rios, resident. First of all, I want to thank Sam and his group, Public Works. They've been doing beautiful. Baldwin Park is becoming to look like Baldwin Park. Then, the CEO, maybe two months ago, I talked to him about what the ex-mayor was saying. Because a resident in my area and in Barnes area, even North Park, came to me. He says, "This is what the ex-mayor is saying." So, I came to Enrique, and I told him. And it was basically what he was saying, he says, "If I was the mayor again, I would call the Health Department and get all those taqueros out of the way." So, that's why I went directly to Enrique. In return, Enrique worked out a system that are code enforcers. Within the month, they got rid of everything. And that's what I mean about code enforcers. They did a beautiful job. Jose did a beautiful job. He was working on the weekends. And by, I think, the second, third week, he had almost everybody out from the city. But it was the support, it was the CEO and the mayor. I know he has to follow your lead. But, like I said, Baldwin Park is looking like Baldwin Park. Clean. You know, and that's what we want. You know? All those taqueros and power vendors and everything, we send them to West Covina or to El Puente. My friends from those areas, they say, "What the hell do you guys do?" Well, you go to your city council and talk about it. But thank you, Enrique. You know, beautiful job. Manny, good job on the parks. Like, when I call you, not just to call you, but you guys are keeping up with everything. You know, the fans that went ahead and fixed it, beautiful job. Because we're getting that problem solved again. Okay? Thank you.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. First of all, I want to thank the city manager for meeting with me and Mr. Rios. We had a good conversation, and you listened to our complaints, and you didn't think that we were too crazy. And I want to thank Sam for helping pick up some stuff that we had with the transient people and helping out when you get called. So, I appreciate your help out there. And Jose at Code Enforcement, he helped out quite a bit with getting stuff done and enforced. So, I want to recognize when people do good, I will acknowledge that. Also, Mayor, thank you that we finally got the vendors off the street. We finally look like a real city again and not a trashy city doing the stuff that they were doing. If you listened to us old timers at the first time, we could have got this done a long time ago. But we went the long way around, but we still got what we got accomplished. So, I appreciate that. Now, the problem that we have is Royal Coaches doesn't seem to want to listen to the city, the police chief, on parking enforcement over there. The chief has been working over a year. We're not getting any results out of this. I want to see his contract pulled and reviewed. I also want to, I'm going to send in a formal complaint on the building that we have tried to get tore down on Royal Coaches at their body shop. It's an illegal building. But when Lozano was in here with Monica Garcia, Hernandez, and Allah in here, they all catered to Royal Coaches because he donated heavily to all their campaign donations. But this building needs to become down, and it has been determined by Code Enforcement a long time ago to be torn down. It's illegally put up. It was never permitted, period. Now, the chief... down. It's illegally put up. It was never permitted, period. Now, the chief can't seem to enforce parking regulations. He needs help, I guess. And the way we're going to do help is to review this contract with Royal Coaches. There's several other tow companies that would love to come into this city and do it the right way and obey our city laws. I'm not going to be a parking meter maid. And every time I send the chief pictures, it's like, "Oh, well, what do you want me to do?" Well, the training, the people are in training. Our officers are busy. They're chasing down other criminals. Well, the problem is Royal Coaches needs to be sent a message. And I don't know how you're going to do it, but I would review their contract, put them up for review. This is the only way you're going to get their attention. Now then, as far as I'm concerned with Royal Coaches, they should go. And I think with all the corruption that was done during the Lozano regime, it needs to stop. And the way you stop that is the people like Royal Coaches that's donated and given all this stuff to them to make them win elections and win corrupt elections with false people voting. Now, the Police Department, we had a transient across from my street try to get him out.
Your time is up, sir.
And when we did that, what ended up happening was
Your time is up, sir.
Nobody could do anything.
Sorry, your time is up.
And he chased down a young girl down the street and exposed himself. But they let him back on the street the same night.
Is there anybody else looking to speak? If not, at this moment, I will move to close public communications. And then, I just wanted to address Mr. Luna's issue about water conservation. It's been on our list for, I think, a very long time now. We are working on, on making sure that we conserve water and at the same time, help residents. So, we're looking for partnerships to change infrastructure and, and not only save water, but help you save on your bills. We know that, you know, costs of living are high. We know that inflation, we're seeing the highest inflation that we've seen in 40, 40 years. So, we are keeping that in mind. We're, we're conscious of the constantly increasing cost of living, and we're trying to make sure we mitigate that and make sure that we take care of our residents during some of the hardest times. And so, at this moment, we'll move to consent calendar. Is there any items council is looking to pull? If not, I'd like to pull item number three and item number four. And if there's no other items that are, that council's looking to speak about, I will make a motion to pass items number one through 10, excluding items three and four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there, City Clerk, roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
I believe it was Councilmember Garcia or Avila?
Councilmember Avila.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
You know, just to go over the content and introduce the information.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, Damian?
Yes.
And so, yeah, I've been in that.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hernandez?
And Councilmember Hernandez is not, not.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. So, we have item number three, and item number three is a pretty exciting purchase agreement, if I'm not mistaken. So, Manny, I don't know if you just quickly want to talk about Joan Bridge in Maine?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk a little bit about a new property that we just purchased, or we are in the process of purchasing. This is on the corner of Joan Bridge and Maine, on the north end of the city of Baldwin Park. It is a small parcel, but we plan to develop a pocket park, which is a very small version of a larger type of park. And this will be the first park that we have added to our park system in decades. So, I'm very happy to share with the community that tonight, with tonight's City Council action, we will be purchasing this parcel. And hopefully, in the near future, we will be developing the parcel to, developing it into a neighborhood pocket park. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you for that. And so, you know, not only is this one of the most new parks, one of the first parks that we're adding in a while, this is actually the first park that we're building in the north side of Baldwin Park. So, we're well aware that we need to increase access to resources, increase access to services, and of course, to green space, as we know that Baldwin Park is heavily hurting on the ability to provide green spaces to its residents. So, I'm very excited about this. This will be the first park that we build, passing the Ramona, which is kind of the median here in the city. So, it's a pretty big deal. And of course, it's right next to a resident, residential area, which means that a multitude of residents will now have access, or in the future, they'll have access to a park without crossing the street, which I think is a pretty big deal. So, thank you for that, Manny.
Play during the series.
So, at this moment, I'll make a motion to pass item number three. Can I get a second?
So, we laugh about it, but
City Clerk, roll call, please.
God recognize that. Keep our
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And then, we have item number four. And so, item number four, I just want to move over to the next council meeting, which will be on April 20th. That is my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And so, at this moment, we are done with our agenda, and we are at City Council, City Clerk, City Treasurer, Staff Request, and Communications. And I did have a, I did have two, two items. And the first one was making sure that we put home ARPA funds into a strategic plan that'll help us over the long term. I know that we have, we should have around a million dollars, and then we still have, and that's not including our actual ARPA dollars. And at the beginning of the year, I did request that we allocate some of those ARPA dollars for homeless services and tackling that crisis. So, I want to make sure that we use those dollars and come up with a strategic plan, not just with staff, because I know staff is busy, but I want to make sure that we bring on a, an attorney and an illegal firm that specializes in that, work with our current partners and seek out new partners. I know that we have a, some sort of contract with Union Station Homeless Services, and how can we expand that to reach our goal and making sure that these people get our services provided? And how do we do it by at the same time meeting the needs and goals of Martin Merseth Boise? Then, of course, we do have a, we have, I know that we have a multitude of events, and then June is coming up. I believe that last year, for the first time ever, we proclaimed June to be Pride Month here in the city of Baldwin Park. And so, this year, I'd like to see if we can create a pride event. But I know that we're very busy during that time, so it just might be a matter of adding some of the, adding it to a, to a current event already. I know that we have the first concert in the park in June, so that might be an event where we can add some, blend it in with the pride event.
Yeah, very excellent idea, Mayor. We've already reached, reached out to the mariachi group. So, it looks like everything will fall in place. So, thank you very much, and we will incorporate into our first concert in the park series, which will be Thursday, June 30th. So, it'll be a culmination of the month of June. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Manny. And then, Councilmember Garcia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I requested that we conduct some community outreach regarding the closure of Little Main as part of the Zoccolo project. And I want to make sure that we're very thorough in our community outreach to businesses and residents that are in the immediate area, but also the community at large, because I know that this is a small street, but it is heavily utilized by residents trying to get from the north to the west. And, you know, it serves, it serves its purpose when it comes to circulation, which is why, you know, I had requested the circulation study for, as part of the design process for the Zoccolo Park Plaza. But if I look at the Safe Routes to School projects that we've completed along Main Avenue, I was, I was very much an advocate for community outreach for those projects and, you know, refresher outreach efforts, because it was a project for like a span of 10 years. And so, no different than that project. I want to make sure that, you know, we do the same here, because it will impact our community. And if I look at, you know, how residents responded to the pretty minor modifications along Main Avenue, I'm concerned that, you know, residents should be aware of the potential closure of this street well in advance and provide input. And, you know, just, just know what's coming down the pike if we do move forward with this design, which it looks like we are. So, my request specifically is to conduct community outreach to businesses along Ramona Boulevard and Sterling Way and the community at large regarding the proposed street closure of Little Main for Zoccolo Plaza. Specifically, I would like to ask community development staff to walk the businesses along Ramona Boulevard and Sterling Way and to the, you know, to any businesses that are abiding the Zoccolo Plaza, and to personally invite the managers and owners to upcoming community meetings. I would also ask our staff to leave behind materials that show the proposed improvements and street closure. We know what happens. Sometimes, businesses or residents will receive a letter from the city and not even open it. And then, they, you realize that they just missed a very important project, and I wouldn't want that to happen, especially, you know, with this potential street closure. And then, second, I'd like our staff to send postcards with the proposed plaza and street closure to residents per the usual city planning process, which I think is 500-foot radius. And then, third, display plaza design and announce street closure in the Now newsletter for the community at large. This way, people on, you know, every pocket of our community knows what's, what's being proposed here. And then, finally, I would ask that we post materials on city social media outlets. So, all of this to engage with and inform the community regarding the street closure of Little Main, which has been heavily, heavily utilized by constituents across the city. So, that would be my request. And, you know, I hope that we can conduct this very thorough community outreach. I think it's warranted for this project.
Great, thanks. So, the one thing I would say is, I don't think we need the postcards if we're going to send a ballpark now. The ballpark now goes through a single door. So, if you're going to send the ballpark out now, I would just say, use the whole front page, put everything that you would put in the postcard, and then put everything else in there. You know, we just had our first Zoccolo meeting, and it seemed that residents that live in the area weren't too concerned about the street closure. They, I think they, they were, I think they were relieved about the, the idea that that street is now safer to cross. And all of us have been having lunch at Sage recently, so we know the dangers that we face when we try to get good food across the street. But other than that, and I know that we are also talking about traffic signals and upgrades in other areas, you know, and I kind of voiced that concern at first, right? I use that street to get to the 10 and City Hall, but, you know, can also get it on the, can also get the 10 through other avenues. Those avenues are also getting some improvements. I think you said Merced and Byland are also getting turn signals, which should ease traffic over there, and we're able to move traffic around, you know? And I, and I just want to know if we, you know, it sounds like we're doing a ton of input like never before. And I know that, that street was going to get heavily modified when the 120 units were going to be built there. Did we plan for such a rigorous effort then?
It wasn't going to be modified, and it certainly wasn't going to be decreased.
I think the street was actually going to get pushed towards the property line. Is that, do you know, Sam or?
Well, the street wasn't impacted.
So, I don't recall specifically, but I do remember looking at that street and proposing minor modifications to it.
Right. Because it seems, so from, I didn't have all the information, but from the pictures I've seen from the Rome Plan, it looked like the street was going to get pushed towards the property line by the office, by the car wash. So, I mean, either and then, you know, I think community input is great. I think we should do it all the time. I think it's a little weird that we're doing it for 100 feet of street and not for the miles and miles we did for the bike lanes. But I think it's great. I think overall, the community has shown support for it. They understand that it's a minor change in their life, but a, a big, it'll be a big catalyst for the downtown. And so, when we look at any downtown, we know that, you know, we're, we're making it for the residents. We're making sure that it's for community, for walking. We've talked about a walkable city, talked about a vision. Well, this really adds to it. But I would say, I think the postcards, I know last time we sent out for Be Proud, it brought in a big cost to the city. It was something very minor, something that wasn't even, I think it got lost in my mail. It was a very small postcard, less than four by six or something. So, I would just say, use the, the whole front page of the ballpark now, put all the information in there, add the images, add the, let people know that this is a full-on. We receive the $6 million grant from the Senate, so we're not paying for it. It's bringing the retail businesses, it's bringing in green space, let people know we're park poor, and the type of things that are coming up with
And, Mayor, just so that you know, with the Safe Routes to School, the bike lanes, there was, there were, there were definitely numerous meetings with community stakeholders, including, you know, we walked from, I want to say, Morgan Park to Arrow Highway along Main Avenue at least two or three times. Sam Gutierrez knows that I pushed for heavy community outreach efforts on that project. And, you know, to your point, it still took people by surprise. And that's why, even for all the efforts that we made with that project, I want to make sure that it's on people's radar, because it's not just little modifications to sidewalks. You know, we're proposing a street closure. And so, I don't see any harm in, you know, adding even like a flyer, or I was proposing a postcard because it would, it would have a visual immediately when you look at it. And especially for the people in the area that use Little Main and that use Sterling Way so on a daily basis. So, I don't think it hurts us, you know? And if we're willing to spend money on apparel and jackets and t-shirts, I think we can spend a little more money to let our residents know what's coming down the pike.
Yeah. So, I think, I mean, by all means, we've actually spent money on a lot worse things. So, jackets are the least of our worries. However, posters are going to get lost. There's no point in doing that. So, I would just say, use the main page of the, of the ballpark now. It's a three-year, it's twice or three times the size of a regular piece of paper. Use a bigger font, use a nice font, put all the maps there, you can put all the images there. It's going to save the city money. Last time we sent out a Be Proud, and not only that, but we're short staff, we don't have enough staff. Staff is working on more important things like cannabis and making sure that we fix that. So, I think, you know, we need to be conscious of how much workload we're putting on staff, especially during this time. So, I mean, if any other council members have any choice on that, my decision would be use the ballpark now for the most of it and save money there.
I, I agree with the Baldwin Park now, and maybe you can just add on there. I think that we're assuming that construction's going to start sometime around August of this year. So, just emphasize that construction will be starting soon. That way, they are aware that the street closure is going to be there, because I know there's been a lot of, you know, a lot of community outreach and input already, but there are going to be some residents that are not aware of that street closure. So, I think using the front page of the Baldwin Park now can accomplish, actually, I think it would be better than the postcard, because it would be, you know, the full page versus, you know, a postcard size. But I think that using the front of the Baldwin Park now would accomplish that.
I agree with that. Is there any way, Sam, that we can already start putting up signs? Street will be closed starting as of this date. So, residents and people driving by already see that sign. You know how they post ahead of time, this freeway ramp will be closed from this day to this day, and they start posting it a month ahead or a couple of months ahead, so people are aware not to use that, that exit. Can we find a way to put signs up in that area?
Absolutely. That is certainly something that we can work on. In fact, we are working on a new rendering that will show, as opposed to what we've put out so far, that would show more of what the park is going to look like and what the street closure will look like. So, as soon as that rendering is completed, we can put it up on the board and put it on site as an announcement.
Yes, with the dates of approximate, approximate dates that the street will close, that way they're aware. They could start seeing it right away, including putting it on the Baldwin Park now. That would be good, I think. Thank you.
So, let me ask my colleagues on the council So let me ask, uh, my colleagues on the council, what are your thoughts, uh, about having community development staff walking into the businesses and letting them know about upcoming community meetings? And, and personally inviting them and leaving material behind.
I, I agree with that. I mean, yeah, if there's gonna be any, I don't know if there's, I, I mean, staff, I don't know if there's any more other, any other community meetings regarding the so-called project, but if there is, I mean, it doesn't hurt to have, uh, staff go out there to the local businesses and let them know and drop off any type of material.
I agree. That's a good idea to, to do that.
Yes. So to, to answer your question, Councilmember Damian, uh, Mayor Protem Damian, yes, we, we do have, uh, community meetings and staff, uh, updates to the city council built into the agreement with the, um, with the architect. Also, uh, things are in the works and, and, uh, Mr. Ron Garcia will speak to, uh, what we're planning to do as far as visiting the businesses.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, um, I think it's, you know, even if we over-communicate uh, to the immediate community and the community at large, I think that's, that's a good thing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Mayor and Council, as, uh, um, uh, Public Works Director mentioned, uh, there is, uh, a effort right now in the process. We are, um, pla, we already had it in the works to walk, uh, Ramona and engage the property owners, um, uh, on the upcoming, uh, project and also, uh, scheduling in the next couple of weeks. Uh, meeting with, uh, those ownership and, uh, owners of those businesses uh, along Ramona that'll be affected by, uh, the construction of the, of the park.
And Ron, can you include Sterling Way on that? Sterling Way from, um, Maine to Baldwin Park Boulevard?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Also like to add that, uh, we wanna also take the opportunity as a reminder, um, while we're engaging with the owners along, um, Ramona is also kind of, uh, let them know and remind them of what's going on with the latest approval of the downtown specific plan. Thank you.
I think as long, Ron, as long as the focus, you know, the emphasis is on, um, on the project and this potential street closure. Um, because, you know, it's, it's the specific plan has, it can be a little bit more complicated and, you know, we wanna make sure that if you guys are gonna be conducting this outreach, that it's very focused and it's very clear. And it doesn't leave people, you know, more confused. So anyway, we can talk about that, you know, um, as a follow-up conversation.
Absolutely. Um, we'll definitely take that and we'll definitely do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ron. And then I know, uh, Councilmember wasn't here, but he did request that I bring up his request, which is a discussion to explore the creation of Ballpark Youth Commission to provide insights and needs to the city. Help build leadership skills, prepare for a professional career in public or community service and obtain a unique insight into how local government functions. Um, I think that's a great idea. Fortunate that her, uh, Councilmember Hernandez is not here to, uh, talk about it. Uh, I know that he's brought it up a, uh, a, a multitude of times to create more uh, youth initiatives and I, and I believe the council has shown a lot of, uh, support for that idea and I think it's great. I would add that I think we currently have some commissions that allow for student commissioners. So we should maybe be engaging with our schools and making sure that we fill up those positions as well. So that we get, uh, the next generation as involved as possible. And we, uh, and we get to hear their input as well. I think that's a great idea and giving them those opportunities, uh, to excel and keeping them busy in a, in a good way.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I spoke with Councilmember Hernandez and he asked me, um, to continue the item um, for the next meeting. So if that, that's my motion to continue this item to the next meeting and then we can discuss it then.
Okay, I was told to continue it, but yeah, that's fine. Uh, doesn't.
Know what I'm talking about and they would take me more seriously.
Okay, so at this moment, uh, the council, uh, has reached, it's, it's, yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, I apologize. Um, I didn't have the chance to add the request to the agenda. But I wanted to see if we can direct staff to present a staff report um, with the possible revenue opportunities for the old, uh, daycare facility at the Esther Snyder Center. Um, I would like to explore the possibility to develop an outdoor rental venue um, for the benefit of our residents. Um, I've seen other cities have like those outdoor venues. Uh, sometimes they like to have them at night. They have those lights outside. We really don't have anywhere to congregate like that. So I'm thinking if we can bring back a staff reporter, work in two ways. One, it'll help bring in revenue to the city. And number two, it'll give us something different, uh, for our residents and they have the possibility to rent that venue out. And my second, uh, request would be if staff can bring us back an itemized list of all the expenses that we've had with the ARPA funds and what the balances are uh, left over there so that we have an idea of where we allocating the money to and, you know, what other possibilities we have to allocate more money to. I know that we, we had preliminary, uh, budget areas that we concentrated on at the beginning. But I know we've made a few expenses, so I kind of wanna get a better idea of where we're at, how much we've spent and how much we have left over.
Oh, real quick, uh, Councilmember Damian, what, what type of rental venue did you say you wanna create?
It's, it's an outdoor venue. Um, it's something where you, you know, you would put the lights out there, uh, especially with the summer months, you know, you can go out there and, and rent the venue at night. We don't really have any outdoor venues other than the Walnut Creek Nature Park. Um, so I would like to see and explore the options that we may have or the possibilities for that facility. This way we have something new for the residents to rent. And second, something that will bring us, uh, you know, generate more revenue for the city as well.
Great. So you're talking about like a event, uh, an event venue, right?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha, okay. That's a great idea. So I know that, uh, last time we did give direction for staff to hire a, uh, an architect for, uh, the development of the, um, the, um, yeah, the old, uh, Boys and Girls Club, but we were looking at a, um, more of a, a children-themed venue rental. Um, so we can explore that area and another area as well.
Doors and allows to reach maximum growth.
Yeah, cuz it would be something more of like a courtyard area, um, you know,
Absolutely.
would be nicely landscaped, but yeah, let's explore, you know, the options there, you know, what, what, what would benefit there? Uh, you know, cost, we obviously wanna look at the cost of that. But we wanna make sure that we, I mean, for me, if we can, if we can create more revenue and have something new for our residents, I think it's a win-win.
Yes.
Yes, that, we had actually had that conversation with Manny, um, I'm opening that venue, Danny, like, like you're saying, to make it a, a nice venue for our residents or maybe people outside of the area to come and use it. So let's work on that. Let's see what we can do.
So I believe we have a, uh, a housing authority meeting, but it wasn't, I don't have the agenda, so give me one second. So because we have a housing authority meeting, I do have to make the announcement that the, uh, city council is, uh, are the housing authority and we will receive a stipend for this meeting. Uh, in addition to our regular city council stipend. The attorney, is that a valid enough statement?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I do think that, um, i- isn't it thirty dollars? I think you, you might wanna mention that.
I believe it may be thirty dollars, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Uh, so we do have a, uh, public hearing and that's the Ballpark Housing Authority Public Housing Agency Fiscal Year Two Hundred Twenty-Two, Twenty Twenty-Three Annual Plan. Staff recommends the Ballpark Housing Authority Board open the public hearing, hear public testimony and adopt the public hearing agency, uh, annual plan, which includes the Violence Against Women Act policies and approve resolution of number HA dash two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero one, establishing the adoption of the plan as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So Ron, is that, uh, an item that you can lead us on?
Yes, Mayor, uh, Housing Manager Carol Avril, uh, will be providing the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, the Housing Authority of Baldwin Park, um, on an annual basis, uh, prepares the, um, uh, PHA or the Public, uh, Housing Authority Plan in connection to the five-year consolidated plan that we prepare to describe the mission of the agency and the long-range goals that we have to achieve those, that mission. The annual plan outlines the approach to manage the programs and to provide the services for the upcoming year that includes the Section Eight Housing Choice Voucher Program and public housing. The annual plan also serves as the annual application for grants to support, uh, improvements to the public housing buildings known as the Capital Fund Program. And the fiscal year twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three plan is due, um, to HAD by April seventeen. Um, so we require some public input and they, um, we select every year a resident advisory board. We send an invitation to residents, uh, of the Section A program or public housing. And so we have five members. We held a meeting on March fifteen, twenty-twenty-two. A draft of the plan was provided to the, uh, advisory board. And the members, uh, were able to review the plan and, uh, make comments. We did not receive any comments at that time. Also were required to issue a public notice and a forty-five day comment period. So the public notice was published in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, um, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual plan and the proposed capital improvement and other required supporting documentation. The public comment period commends on February sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, and it was, it concluded on April first, twenty-twenty-two. No comments are being received, um, by the end of the conclusion of the, uh, public comment period. So on our, um, PHA plan, we are required to provide information in regards to the progress uh, in meeting the five-year plan, the mission and the goals. So the Baldwin Park Housing Authority on February nineteen, twenty-twenty-one submitted a plan for the project-based voucher program to HAD. The, um, proposed project, um, was to convert two hundred and eleven of the, uh, housing choice vouchers of the two hundred and eleven of the eight hundred and ninety-nine housing choice, vice, choice vouchers to the, um, project-based voucher program. The RFP for the project-based voucher program was released and two hundred and eleven project-based vouchers were allocated to four different, uh, affordable housing projects. However, one project fell through, so the, um, Housing Authority will be releasing another RFP to allocate the remaining, uh, project-based vouchers. Also, the Housing Authority has been reviewing expenditures and has implemented changes as necessary to the budget and expenses. Um, also the Housing Authority provides families with census tracts at the time of admission to encourage them to move in different areas. So some families have moved to some of the outside poverty areas due to the, uh, Baldwin Park Housing Authority outreach to, um, other owners. The, uh, public, uh, the Baldwin Park Housing Authority also conducts staff meetings and trainings to inform staff of new regulations or procedures to reduce any errors. Um, the Housing Authority is currently working with developments that receive project-based vouchers, uh, allocations on environmental reviews and also the lease up. The, uh, Housing Authority also continues to improve the public housing through management and in process to, and is in process to convert the, uh, public, um, the pro, project-based vouchers. The, uh, Housing Authority also continues the services with Fair Housing Agency. We contract with, um, an agency that can provide fair housing services. Um, also we ensure access regardless of race, color, religion, national origins, ex-familial status and disability. So this information and all information that is required by HAD is provided to all the families that participate on the Section A pro, uh, program. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have one question. Uh, Carol, when does the, um, Section Eight open back up?
So, um, we have been working on purging the waiting list. We had about fifteen hundred uh, families on the waiting list and we were able to purge the list. So we are getting to the end of it. And we are in the process of putting together all the logistics and so we are planning to open that waiting list in about two, three months.
Got it. And when you purge that list, uh, Carol, do any of those people that were on the waiting list that didn't get to any of the housing, are they put back on the new list or do they have to reapply?
They will have to reapply because we already, um, call every, every person that was on that list has been, um, uh, has received a letter to apply. Um, so we are like, um, at this point, starting clean, uh, clean, a new list. So if people didn't get on the list before, they can't apply at this time. And then, um, in the past, um, my understanding is that we only kept about three thousand people, but what we're gonna do this time is that we're going to increase the number. Um, we have a system. There is a lot, a lottery that, um, we have to follow and then, uh, we will be selecting about four thousand people and put them on the waiting list.
Perfect. Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Carol, I have a question since we're on this topic. So we administer the vouchers for a region, correct?
That's correct. We cover five cities.
And can you tell me what is the benefit of us? It's just seems like a lot of work. You know, on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park for the region. So how does a city benefit from that?
So the, the, um, Housing Authority is a regional housing authority. We cover the cities of Baldwin Park, El Monte, South El Monte, Monrovia and West Covina. Um, all the vouchers that we receive, the, um, Housing Authority receive, uh, an administration fee for each voucher that we lease up. So, um, we do benefit because we're serving, um, um, hundreds of people in this area, whether it's in, or any of those cities. Um, and then as you may know, we also receive, uh, emergency housing vouchers during the pandemic. So we receive an additional forty-three vouchers for, um, to serve those that are homeless. And so we have been, uh, also receiving administration fees for those vouchers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. So if there's no more questions, I think we can open up the public hearing. So at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing to anybody looking to speak in favor. Anybody looking to speak in favor? Did anybody call in? City clerk?
No, Mayor.
Thank you for that. So at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing for anybody speaking in opposition. City clerk, did anybody call in opposition?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So at this moment, I will officially close the public hearings. Um, and I'll make a motion to approve, to approve the, uh, Ballpark Housing Authority's, uh, Public Housing Agency Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Two, Twenty Twenty-Three Annual Plan. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Board member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Board member Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And so at this moment, we have met, uh, we have reached the end of our agenda and our, uh, official business before we, before I forget, uh, Manny, I just wanna make sure that we, um, that we do start planning an effort for community input on the north side of Ballpark for the proposed park in that region and, and talk to those residents and see what they'd like to see their neighborhood.
Yes, sir, Miss, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, plan on having, uh, several community in, input meetings because specifically for that project, we will be applying for grants and public engagement is paramount in regards to applying for, for grants. So we'll definitely have a number of public input meetings. Thank you.
Great. So at this moment, I will move to adjourn all meetings. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No, meetings are adjourned. No, meetings are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.